It's the end of our first and ending hour. I hope to spend this with Dr. Mary May. Her dedication to the man of the father. Ma'am, it's perfectly all right with me if you all have to listen. And to postpone this, I really think it is for Miss Hammer's program. And it's immaterial to me. I can make it five minutes or two hours. I know it's an event because I don't want to put anybody in the corner.
What is your plan? Do you want to change the program? About that.
Ma'am, ma'am, may I ask if the program was postponed, would we be insured of having it at a date in the near future? Could the program be changed for this?
We would not be in a position to impose on our stickers on the second session. Another person would attempt to trick me. Been moved in secondary that we proceed with the program as planned. I think I've seen here. Well, thank you for your patience. Miss Hammer did call me, talk to me one day this week. And I told her if I could talk off the cuff, so to speak, I would be happy to do it. And since the thing, as she indicated, is the development of nursing, I thought I might do an overall survey of nursing and look at it in terms of whether nursing exists in a vacuum or is it what it is because of certain things that happen in the world at a particular time. The first slide that I'm going to put on here is from Dr. Stuart. And I nearly do this to show you how nursing in quantity and quality rose gradually from the pre-Christian era into the beginning of the first century following Christ. And then we had a plateau. And then long about the 13th century, there was another slight increase. And long about the 17th century, a very deep decline in nursing. And then in the 19th century, it began to go up and we think it's been going up ever since. Now, what is the purpose of the rise and the fall and the plateau? Did it just happen? Did we not have people interested in nursing at that time? Or what caused the rise and the dips and the plateau in nursing? Well, you have the answer. Also, in this same book, there are a number of pages in the back that tell us, and I don't know whether this will show up. If it does, turn on the light. I have my back, so. Too small. I think you better turn on the light. In the even pre-Christian era, the worst thing that caused a rise in nursing and medicine was Hippocrates and also Socrates. Well, we lose sight of very often. You remember Socrates drank the chocolate cream off because he was rather sad than not to have the truth. And he died for this. And Hippocrates was very much like Socrates because he was willing to take the time and hope that truth might prevail. Why do we call Hippocrates the father of modern medicine? For one reason and one reason only. He proved, or set out to prove, he didn't prove it because it wasn't proved for a thousand years after. But he set out to prove that disease was not caused by evil curse, that there was some physiological reason. And it took medicine a thousand years to prove this. But Socrates or Hippocrates believed it to exist. Then, when we get into the Christian era, where we have a slight rise and at least a holding the plateau, we get into the military influence of nursing. And we have tough orders at the Knights of St. John, which exists down to this deck if you press the button. I was traveling through England a number of years ago on a very rainy day. We got to this small town, which is known because it has in it the only three spired cathedral in all of England. Now, it wasn't the cathedral or the three spires, although I am an amateur photographer and spires are one of my hobbies to take photographs of. But I didn't take this for that purpose. It's not too good, but I think we might see a little bit. You have it turned to semi. The next picture. Look on the top and see if that little dial's on semi. Huh? Turn it on semi. And then press the button. The next one. Out of this church in the pouring down rain were nurses in uniform, as you can see, and men in uniform further back. And I was very curious and stopped to find out what was happening. And that day, they were celebrating the Knights of St. John, which came down from the early centuries and still is an organized form of nursing in some of our countries and particularly in England. If you'll push the next one. As I went down into Italy, I found the place where Saint Francis of Assisi operated, so to speak. And you remember, he went to live amongst the lepers and the poor people of the community in Assisi. It was largely due to some of these early religious monastic and religious sisterhoods that preserved and caused nursing to grow through the ages. And if you just keep pushing them. The Basilica of Saint Francis is approached from these very narrow streets through the little town of Assisi. As we came through there on a bus, we touched the walls on either side of the road. The roads were so narrow. And people today live in very close proximity to each other and in very crowded conditions and a great deal of poverty exists. These are the doors, some of the doors of the basilica and the beautiful rose window at the top. This is a picture of the top of the basilica. Just keep going. These are all pictures in and around the place where Saint Francis did his work. And this is overlooking the valley, which is largely agricultural today, just as it was back in those days. Well, these are inside of the basilica. And you see the emphasis on the pictures which you find on the walls. These date back to the 11th century and some of them earlier. Just keep going. Just keep going. These are all in the same. And here you see Saint Francis praying. The pilgrimage to Egypt, the flight to Egypt. All right, then stop. Turn it off. Now, probably the next big change that affected nursing was the long about, oh, what was about the 11th century? Middle of 11th century, the papacy reached its peak. And then, as you remember, we had the Reformation. We had a peak where the cloisters, the monasteries were developing nursing. Then with the Reformation and the closing of some monasteries, the change in the complexity of hospitals, et cetera, hospitals began to be built by secular orders. However, the municipality of the world were not too much interested in the health and welfare of people. And so these rose very slowly. And we had a period of time of Sarah Gamp. And this is my favorite period in history. And it's the period that I have tried to collect rare books, pottery, pictures, et cetera, that would portray this period. It's a fascinating period in history. And the next picture is on the slide, shows the birthplace of Florence Nightingale, who had much to do with the rise of nursing after the sudden decline during the Reformation. Would you turn them on? And I'm skipping over this very early because I know you're tired. This is the birthplace of, oh, you missed it. That was the birthplace of Florence Nightingale. If you can turn it back, I doubt I can. No, let it. Go to the next one. I'm jumping over to England now. And this is the memorial to Florence Nightingale in the city of London. You remember Florence Nightingale was born when? Died in 1910 and founded her school of nursing in 1860. Let's go on a little bit with these. This is St. Thomas Hospital in London. And it's very interesting how the taxi men in London identified. We stopped in Amsterdam and took to St. Thomas, who never had seen it before. We didn't know how large. We had some idea. And he said, well, do you want to go to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? And we kind of shook our head and we said, what do you mean? He said, well, there are seven weeks. And each one is named unofficially, the day of the week. So we said, well, we wanted to go to the administration building. So he took us to the central building. Okay. This is the central administration building. Now, this is a hospital Florence Nightingale did not work in. And actually, she never set foot in it as an educator of nursing. She directed all of the school's activity from her apartment. And Mrs. Wardroper was her master of nursing. All right? This was the only wing of St. Thomas that was bombed out during World War II. And this was the Florence Nightingale Foundation Wing. You remember that when Florence went to Crimea and returned, she had become an idol to the people. She tried to, and actually did, literally sneak back into England and disappeared and was not seen too much after that, except by those who went to her doorstep. But these soldiers and the populace of Great Britain gave their money. The rich and the poor, the soldier, the widow, gave money to accept, to give Florence a gift. And the only way that Florence accepted it was that it be used to endow schools. And she didn't get around for quite some time after the end of Crimea to establish in her school. But that money set up a foundation, which is still educating the nurses at the St. Thomas Hospital School of Nursing for their first year. When I was there, the students were housed in pointed huts because this building was bombed out. All right? As I indicated to you, if you want to know nursing, you've got to look at its past, its present, and its future. Where have we been? Where are we and why are we where we are? And where are we going? We only get this from history. And you can read history from primitive times until today. And you will find that there were largely three factors that affected the development of nursing. One was the religion, one was the military, and one was the emancipation of women. These three things throughout all history, other than the great craving to be of service to humanity, have molded and shaped history. Wars have had a terrific impact on history, all the way from the First State on up to our present Cold War. World War I saw its nurse heroes. Edith Cavell was one. And this is the spot upon which Edith Cavell was shot for a spurt. Next one. Edith was taken in Belgium. She was a Belgian nurse. This hospital in Belgium, in Brussels, is the Edith Cavell Memorial Hospital. This is the hospital of which Mademoiselle Behay was president of the International Conference of Nurses the year that I was in Rome. That was the year she went out of office. But she was the director of nurses in this hospital and this hospital is memorial to Edith Cavell. All right? Nurses have not gone without glory. And in some of the history books, you will find in the back of them many memorials that have been made in recognition of the service that nurses have given. This particular window is the Battle of Britain, which is in Westminster Abbey. This window was given in honor of all the people who fell in World War II. And the next picture is very close to the window and part of the sequence of the memorial. And this is the nurses' memorial in Westminster Abbey. This is modern history and I just threw it in to give you a little American history. This is the oldest woman medical college in the United States. They have one of the oldest, but not the oldest, school of nursing outside of the first three Nightingale schools. One more picture, I believe. I put this in, this is Dr. Kitty McFar- uh, Tapper, we call her Kitty. McFarlane, who did the first intensive, five-year survey of patients recovering from cancer. She had much to do with the initial work on cancer detection. And of course, she was trainee and a physician at the Women's Medical College of Pennsylvania. Go ahead, Ms. Jones. I threw this one in because nursing is international in scope. And nurses work through the United Nations arm. This arm, if you ever look at the United Nations, you'll see all of the ancillary roots and arms sticking out from the chart. The World Health Organization. This is the United Nations itself over in the corner along the East River in New York. You can turn it off now. No, there's one more, I believe. No, turn it off. Maybe have lights. I always tell my students that nursing is my vocation, but history of nursing is my avocation. And within my avocation, there are rich avenues for fulfillment. I have learned to appreciate very much rare books, particularly of the Florence Nightingale period. The things that happen in our society that are reproduced in our art, painting, literature, are the things that become classics of all time. Why did Dickens write about Sarah Gamp, whose mug I have down there? And Mr. Pickwick? Why did he do this? Was it just fun? Because his stories are delightful? No. Would the Greek men and women of our time have produced it or laughing are evidences of the history of that particular time? Nothing ever makes me want to be a better nurse more than is to go back to Dickens' portrayal of Sarah Gamp. I asked a student the other day. She said something about Sarah Gamp and I said, who was she? Oh, I don't know. Just somebody I learned about history nurses. What did you learn about her? Well, I don't know. I just knew that she lived before Florence Nightingale. How tragic this is. The 19th century, the 18th century, when nursing took its deepest slump from primitive times, Dickens portrayed this for all time as an example to every nurse who ever existed to move away from as far as she can move. Ella Shayer has said some time ago that nursing is a social force and that it should act upon society just as other social forces act upon nursing. But for generations, we have done nothing but let society force against nursing. Where are we as nurses going to exert our force? So that four, five, six generations from now, nurses will rise up and say, wasn't it a great century? Florence Nightingale was 100 years beyond her time. She founded the school in 1860 and laid down four basic administrative principles for schools of nursing. At the 1950 mid-century report, which is up here on the right, only 25% of the schools in our country anywhere near met these criteria. And it was only in 1949 and to 59 when the League took a concerted action and the ANA supported this action for school improvement programs, did we rise up and do something about it? And even by 1960, yes, 1960, only something like 68% of our schools were fully accredited. shall future generations call our century blessed as we now look at Florence's century and give thanks that she lived and had a vision beyond her time? Florence didn't have radio and TV. You know what she did? She wrote a book and paid the publisher. She was smart enough to go out and get advertisements to underwrite it. And I'm fortunate enough to have original copies. Nothing gives me greater pleasure than to have contact with those things of the past that have made our present better. And even those things of the past that were not good, that give me an appreciation of how we might make the future better. This is the purpose for learning history of nursing. But how many students like the little girl who knew there wasn't Sarah Gamp, that she lived before Flossie? And she wasn't a very good example, but that is all. But Sarah Gamp typified society of that day and particularly nursing of that day. And it wasn't a very pretty picture. History can be delightful. It can open up avenues for new friendships, new collections, new interests. And when your friends and your relatives know your interests, there's no end of the items, gifts, displaying your specific interest that flows in from all parts of the world. So I'm happy that my avocation is nursing history. It brings great pleasure. The vocation of nursing enriches my avocation and my avocation enriches my vocation. Thank you. You're perfectly welcome, as long as you don't walk off with them. I have a pre-edition of Dickens, you might, those of you who are collectors. It ran off and on the first seal and grade and went backwards. And it, we read it. I have two first editions of Dickens. One of them in the original binding, of which there are only two or three in the world today. When Dickens wrote his first book, he put a clock on the front of it. And when he wrote his first book, the clock pointed to one. And when he wrote his second book, the clock pointed to two. And I have one of the original bindings. I have Florence Nightingale's original copy of Noosa Nursing in the original binding, the original edition. I think the Goldmark Report is something that every nurse should know from cover to cover. It's a 1923 copy. They're out of print, but I do have a copy. Everything that was said in the Goldmark Report was repeated to some extent or another in actual study that has been done covering the overall history of nursing since that time. Brown repeats it, Brinkman repeats it. All these people who've done studies are doing nothing but repeating what came out in the Goldmark Report in a little different way and bringing it up to date. It was our first scientific study in nursing. But you're welcome to look at these things.
Ms. Hammer, I wonder if you would probably interest that group. Let's hear again your continuity of the program that you have for the year.
I'm clearly delighted and honored to stand here. I do want you to reveal yourself, but there, they miss this. This place are our theme, nursing and development, nursing in depth, and nursing in devotion. Thank you. Now, I know you both want to miss a single one. So we look forward to having you with us too. Ms. Ma'am. Ms. Melvin, I'm told, have them out.
This is the invitation to everyone that's interested in the mentally retarded child. And the conference being sponsored by the Major of Nursing, the Georgia Association for Mental Health, and the Georgia Association for the Retarded Chil- Children. It is being held at the Academy of Medicine, February twentieth and twenty-first. And Dr. Perkins is the consultant of the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development, is, you know, speaker. It's been extremely interesting program. One feature that we have is going to be a play, one act play that's going to be produced and written by Mr. Phiphtow, who's with the Academy of Medicine, the Academy of Medicine. The Academy theater here in Atlanta is writing and producing it, and it's going to be specially done. And we're very proud of it. It's just going to be the questions answered, what we do with mentally retarded child and his family. We do invite all of you that have been with the mentally retarded child to attend this conference, and we are looking forward with great anticipation.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Are there any other announcements?
Yes, Chairman, I wonder if we could know how many were present for this meeting? Was there a kind of, oh, there was a camp hanging, but I can't tell you. More than a dozen came in after the camp was taken, and I doubt we have the accurate number.
You had fifty-nine to start with.
We had fifty-nine at the first camp.
Fifty-nine at the first camp. Fifteen from, uh, and, Dave Saxon, and fifteen from E H C T. General Beauty was three. None from occupational health. One here last. Private Beauty was twenty. The public count was six.
I feel sure there were, what number, ten or twelve who came in after the camp was taken. But there are no other announcements?
I'm going to return.
Thank you.
This was the conclusion of the January meeting, January the ninth, nineteen sixty-four.
Uh, Ms. Hannah, would you, uh, overturn the meeting?
Our Father, we're conscious that thou art God, that thou art moved by our feelings. We would that thou would direct our actions this night, make us conscious that we're mortal man, that we, commemoration of this holy season, need a new inspiration from thee and a new assurance of immortality for our lives and the lives of those we serve. We're glad that we're wishing and seeking and longing after that which is good and wholesome, despite that which would depress us, cause us to pine, or cause us to be insecure, can be made naught, we'll put our confidence in thee. We make our prayer in the name of Christ. Amen. We have a little call box next to it.
Ms. Babe Scott, here. Ms. Ruth Bryon, here. Ms. Helen, here. Ms. Dixon, Miss Nice, right. Ms. Kristen, here. Ms. Honeycutt, here. Ms. Cuffin, here. Ms. Williams, right. Ms. Hammond, right. Ms. English, here. Ms. Coe, Ms. Coe, Captain Coe. And Ms. Glendora Robinson. Ms. Moffett Davis, here. Ms. Rachel Sanders. And Ms. Dana Suits.
Yeah.
And Ms. Stella Open. And Crapitla- uh, Crapitla President, Ms. Holland.
Yeah.
Emery President, Ms. Cannon. Brady Number One, Ms. Dixon. And, um, Brady Number Two, Ms. Zola Oka-Fran. George Baptist, Ms. Dana Hudson, right. Piedmont, Ms. Lu- Mrs. Lucy Kimball. St. Joseph's, Ms. Margaret, Mrs. Margaret Carver.
We do have a prayer, uh, to say this in part. The meeting, the minutes of the executive board were treasured, made sure you last week. I hope all of you receive them and read them, and do you have any comments at this time? Do I hear a motion that the intimacy includes as speculated?
I make the motion of this, right? Next second.
Any discussion, any additions, questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. Motion is carried. We have some, um, communications, uh, I expect, uh, to read out at this time.
Ms. Scott, we give, uh, Radio Brady Oven from the Fifth District of G S nineteen ten as a break to the crowd. My retirement brought, uh, many surprises for me to remember for a very long time. Many thanks to you. It has been a real treasure working with the Georgia nurses. They have always, uh, welcomed me sincerely. You sit base February the twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-four. And the nurses' sister is, uh, acknowledging of deep gratitude, uh, your kind, kind expression simply from Mrs. Glenn Alexander. This is the... Ms. Scott, my resignation is in the hands of the Executive Committee of the Private Duty Section effective February the first, nineteen sixty-four. Out of complete office, this beginning, uh, begun during my term of office, Ms. Zirks, the first vice-chairman, was soon the duty chairman on that date. In the short time I have, uh, served, I have tried to perform the duties of office with thorough integrity regardless of the pressure, both begin without such obligations which will then, uh, leave from attending several important meetings last fall, I felt pressing as to, um, hinder me in promising the, um, duties of, performing the duties of the office. Therefore, to assure a job well done, uh, it is necessary, um, to step aside. I am sure that Ms. Zirks, uh, with her experience, will be an exceptional chairman of the Private Duty Section. Thank you for your, uh, unfailing courtesy. Sincerely, Admiral Stevens. This is Dr. Alfred Weinstein. Ms. Atkins, I just saw you as, uh, you left a terrible hand.
More brief, Doctor. This was his last letter to Earth, we sent him a card while he was in the hospital, and you know, he is the businessman before his book could come out. We have a lot from Nezamatic. 'Cause I just saw your January issue of Nezamatic. And won't tell you how much I appreciate the splendid presentation you made of the episode. I'm sure I will, it will create interest among nurses, if possible, I'd like a few copies, um, I think that's January, we got anyhow. In close, please find some pre- publication reviews and a list of the, um, contents in the books, which you might include in your next issue. I appreciate, appreciate it if you will mention that it was published by the Target Press and Isabel at all bookstores until the April twentieth. If Mike later wrote us a little note when we sent, uh, a card, uh, when he had surgery, while he was up in Boston, and, uh, he, he died just recently, uh, before he could have the book. Ms. Cuffin, Ms. Um, Ms. Ryan, over here. There you are. We're going to be there at the T's, the autographing team, and, uh... I don't know, I was playing this thing about his foot, and, uh, it is about nurse. Something, um, simple about. He wrote on the Bob White's bench.
Bob White, certainly.
Certainly. Was it on the Bob White's bench?
One of us called it, uh, uh, that was next thing, in June.
I'd like to officially welcome Ms. Zirks to our bubble. She's been here the past, uh, vice president of section, I believe. And now that she is chair of the private duty section, we're including her, and we're going to pay for her, so. Do we have a report from the secretary?
No.
No report, report to trade.
I don't, for the listener, you've got our audit report, and the, um, for Mr. Audit Report. We can get the books back.
Well, I passed the, uh, register, uh, report around. If anyone didn't see it, did you people, uh, this end, uh, check it? I thought you'd get more, but listen, this, this way. And I, I believe you people, the late comers, uh, from the time it was out, I thought if you looked over the register, uh, report, that you would, uh, you have one down there that you've looked at? Okay.
This is December thirty-first, nineteen sixty-three. The assets of cash, general fund, three thousand, three hundred, forty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Nurse, nurse service fund, savings account, thirty-five, sixty-one. Office change fund, twenty-five, three thousand, four hundred, three dollars and seventy-eight cents. U.S. saving bond, which costs cash value, one thousand, four hundred, ninety-two dollars and twelve cents. Office furniture and fixtures, note one, total assessment, one thousand, nine, ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Five thousand, the total is five thousand, six hundred, sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Liability is, uh, unremitted payroll taxes, one hundred, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Due to the Georgia State Nurses Association, three thousand, four hundred, fifty-nine dollars. Message, December the thirty-first, nineteen sixty-three, two thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. The total liability is five thousand, six hundred, sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. This statement was prepared on the cash basis of the accounting, office furniture and fixtures are stated cost, with no allowance being made for depreciation. Now, this is the first time I've looked at, read one, and I didn't look up at all in my mind. Income dues, note, three, thirty, thirty-five hundred, one hundred, eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Subscriptions to the American Journal of Nursing, two hundred and sixteen, miscellaneous, two hundred and twenty-four, forty-three. Total, thirty-five hundred, uh, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Expenditures, Georgia State Nurses Association, twenty-four thousand, three hundred, fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Salaries, five thousand, ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Plows, ninety-five, forty-nine. Rent, seven hundred and sixty-two. American Journal of Nursing subscriptions, one hundred, eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Telephone, six hundred, eighty dollars and ninety-one cents. Station air, five hundred, thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Postage, mailing, and miscellaneous expenses, one thousand, four dollars and ninety-four cents. Legal and all, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Gifts and awards, one hundred and nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Section expenses, two hundred and one, two hundred and one dollars and ninety cents. District meter expenses, seven hundred, seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. Convention, six hundred, ninety dollars. Insurance, ninety-seven dollars and four cents. Payroll and property tax, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Office supplies and expenses, one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. The total expenditures, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Excess of expenditures over income, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Another bounce, December thirty-first, nineteen sixty-two, three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. Less expense, less excessive expenditures over income as above, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Bounce, December the thirty-first, nineteen sixty-three, two thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Dues are reported, this is a note, dues are reported, as the income is collected, the dues are thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. The above includes thirty thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Nineteen sixty-three dues, and five thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Nineteen sixty-four dues collected in nineteen sixty-three. Of the nineteen sixty-four dues collected, three thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars is included as expenditures to the Georgia State Nurses Association as above the benefit. Do I hear you?
I mean, if they've got audit reports, we've got them placed on the back.
Is there any discussion? Do you have any questions you want to ask us now? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. Motion is carried.
If I'm the, the audit report of the bridge to be accepted, I think I'm the most, that, and does everyone have an opportunity to, to glance over that?
Is there any discussion of the audit of the registry?
This is yours, my question.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contra, no. Motion is carried. Report of the secretary's secretary, respect.
Written report.
Well, there's just nothing. We've seen activities of office that kept us very, very busy. I didn't even have time to make out a pencil to tell you what we've done this afternoon. The telephone kept ringing, especially. The activities have all been carried on, and we, uh...
We have a report, and we're going to, um, send it to the secretary. The, um, program planned for March the twelfth, December nineteenth. Dr. Eloy Steele is the R S teacher, she's going to use a group technique on this game. Coral Group is thanks to Joe from the School of Nursing. Joe, the activities, uh, the, uh, the, uh, activities for Nurse Week, it's a whole five year, uh, program, which is challenging, careers to be, um, directing activities for the nurse of the year. We would like, uh, a system, we're attempting to make proper contact in the house of clinical fashion, and that it will be distributed over a number of days.
and that it will be distributed over a number of days, maybe a portion of the time. Uh, the July the ninth, um, planning is for professional practice program. With Miss Natalie Wade, uh, certainly the moderator. Thank you, thank you. Do you have a quote or ten?
Yes, we've had the statements printed, uh, other than that, we, because we didn't have the meter because we, then we'll run over our budget and we were about one hundred and thirty-three behind. That was a thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars at the time. So, uh, we hope we won't have to miss anymore. But, um, the statements were printed and I will give you just one little, uh, suggestion on this. It makes a little difference on there. The auditor, Mr. Smith, said if we wanted to have these legal. And people have been passing them out, there've been complaints in the registries, that other people, uh, not entitled people were using them. Have never been a member of the registry, we used them. And for the sake of all concerned, that they bear the fifth district seal. Now, the seal was adopted in the state nineteen thirty, and so we had one made up. I brought people with the fifth district, being the only name changed on there. And I called the lawyer to find out what technicalities involved. And he said we may go ahead and adopt the seal officially. We'd like to have it for the record for that. And that it would be the same, would be legal and binding on any of our forms or papers that we should have it. Would someone like to make a motion, just saying we have that on the minutes that we live in the city of Seattle? It comes in on the printing matter there, but it didn't say adopt officially for the fifth district.
I knew that we adopt the seal officially. I said, Lord. That leads to all discussion, that what does this seal do to protect the unscreed society?
Without the seal, without the seal, you have no legal bearing. With the seal, according to the audit, uh, audit, uh, you do. But that's your stake.
Oh, if it's the wrong hand, they still have it?
If it falls into the wrong hands, you're still protected by your seal, by having that on there. It's same thing, uh, uh, they suggested that we do.
Well, I'm asking pure information.
We, they, the, the, the committee has considered in October, that future printing that this place will bring out, that it would bear, non-transferable on there. Stating the statements, you know, will not be given or distributed, uh, to other people. But the auditors say, well, in order to make that legal, you're going to need a seal on there. And, uh, we proceeded to, to do it because, uh, it was necessary to have it done at that time.
And no one else will have the respectability.
That's right. And you'll notice the change at the bottom, that they're non-transferable. And that, um, uh, only members of both the district and the registry are entitled to use it. You see, we've had the legal, uh, uh, questions about it. People have been using them, not even graduate nurses. And some who've never been members of the registry at all, have been passing them out and there's been complaints about it. In addition, in fact, you needed the support. And they felt that it would encourage members to pay their dues in order to have them, being happy.
In other words, you can't buy them unless you pay your dues in the registry.
No, absolutely no. And we were reporting every day. Yesterday, I got in seventy-seven members, the largest ever in one day. And, uh, I reported thirty-eight of to the registry, so they could go ahead and have the entitled to this. But, and we got in twelve applications and most of them were all on private duty or group. People who'd never been, members of all the, all the private duty section, all the districts, are having to join for the first time. It's deplorable to use that word, having, but they are doing it. Interate, uh, uh, Ms. Hooker, it's been very strict about it, that no one... We've just gotten a corrective one yesterday. The printer made a mistake and said it was effective March first nineteen something, fifty-four, I think it was, or some other date. And he did not print the seal as, as it should be printed, just a little bit darker. They, they said they'd do it in light green. But, um, iterate, uh, it is only, and you can't do it. It would be better with getting a hand seal made too, so all the legal papers and everything will happen. Ms. Jackson had mentioned that to me earlier, but we haven't said anything further back. We feel the auditor brought it up, that the imprint should be on those statements as safeguard to us. Because when you send somebody out there, they're representing themselves as being in good standing, not only in the state for the examination, but in their professional organization as well as the registry.
Is there any further discussion about the seal? And you read to both on adoption of the seal. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Motion is carried.
May I tell them that that is exactly the Georgia seal which was adopted? The only difference being is fifth district is only.
Anyone here from the clinic? I think this makes you have a problem.
It's not a, a report from the district, but I have a report from the official register. I just read the one from January and February. Uh, uh, bounce forward, January the first nineteen sixty-four, two thousand, two hundred, twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. Income, me, uh, income and membership dues and bill heads, three thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and seventy-three cents. The total, six thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Disbursement, one thousand, two hundred, seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Salaries, rent, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Telephone and advertising, sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Head and patch, notebooks and postage, twenty-five dollars. The R, RM, LCM and LUM. Cards and envelopes, thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. District meter and quarterly taxes, five hundred, five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Empires, annual federal unemployment, one hundred, fourteen dollars and forty-three cents. State of Georgia, quarter income, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Employment.
This is recording of the meeting on the regular session, district Georgia State Nurses, St. Joseph's Pharmacy, four thirty, January the ninth.
The district meeting of the professional audit register. At this time, our chapter, Miss King, will walk off of the open side. Would you stay and wait? O God, thou who art the best in the days, the youth of our lives, the hope of all mankind. On the threshold of a new year, we spend consciousness our goal. Give us the new twenty-three cents.
And January dues paid by the ARIANs, one hundred, by the licensed practical nurse, twenty-four, and by the undergraduate corps. That was for January. And this is the February report. Bounce forward, February the first nineteen sixty-four, three thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Income from the membership dues and bill heads, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And disbursement of salaries, one thousand, three hundred, nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Rent, one hundred and twenty-five. Telephone and advertising, forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Individual, individualized system posting sheet, eleven dollars and sixty-four cents. Total, one thousand, five hundred, four dollars and eighty cents. Clear in the bank, agrees with statement, four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, dues today from the graduates. I think this is one hundred and eighty-two. But it's blotted, so it's hard to make out. But I'm sure that it's eight, uh, eighty paid during the, uh, month of February. And then the practical nurses, fifty bronch and the, uh, undergraduate sex. And I have a report for the register.
Do you have any January February reports? Have you placed them, have you placed them back? No.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote no. Motion is carried. Uh, I believe there's a report from Ms. Ditchfield, Chamber of Leadership.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you, lady.
On the bottom of my copy, this seal will be out of town on the twelfth, if questions is to be raised.
She won't, that we give them a general meeting, uh, before.
Oh, she's not ready tonight. So, all of you have copies.
I shouldn't read it.
Hmm?
Go ahead. I thought you were trying to streamline your meeting. Yes, I know.
I haven't read it.
I haven't read it.
Oh, it was in, it was in the copy.
Think you were a few minutes. I didn't understand. Think you have a minute? Um, every number four. And bulletin, on up through number six? Well, I don't know, but you're sure this is.
Well, uh, would you like to read the next section?
I've just got a copy that I have.
Anything you have?
No, I don't.
Read it. Read it.
Let, uh, the report of the legislative committee, committee has started met since the, uh, lay of district meeting. However, considerable work was carried out during the time Georgia legislative was in session. The state chairman, Ms. Dana Hudson, kept your district chairman informed all along the way by phone and telephones. Your chairman made many calls in listing the aid of nurses and non-nurses to support scholarship deals and to protest the geriatric nurses' deal. SB number one ninety, to create, um, scholarship commission to make grants to the students of ministry, social work, nursing, pharmacy and so forth, was passed. SB number one forty-six, appropriations for scholarship aid, scholarship aid to nursing and other paramedical groups also passed. The implementation of this style will allow the independent public approval of SB number one ninety, which calls for a constitutional amendment at the next, uh, election. Uh, House Bill number twelve oh seven, to provide for the examination of licensed, uh, te- uh, geriatric nurses was referred to the committee on hygiene and sanitation and did not come out of the committee. According to the Wall Street Journal, of February the sixth nineteen sixty-four, at the federal level, the Johnson administration soon will propose an ambitious, uh, ready for the nation's shortage of nurses, a five-year plan that would, uh, cost more than three million dollars. Our nurses should be alerted to any bills that may come up and be prepared to study them and express their wishes to their U.S. representatives and senators. The best place for information regarding these bills is to read the American Journal of Nursing, three pages entitled, "Press Time," on its page news in the front of the journals, uh, on the journals, fifty one. I feel certain our state legislative legislature keeps us informed as to any federal legislative, uh, bills that may come up relative to nursing, respectful of submitted, our ditch field chairman.
Um, as the chairman there, there are some, um, changes in this report. I mean, the, the Senate Bill one forty-six is not an appropriation bill. That was the resolution to change the constitution and it was passed. But there's been no appropriation passed. There's quite a difference there. I don't know whether you want to leave it in, leave it stand as it is. You can't change a committee's report, but, uh, this, uh, there's certainly been no appropriation bill passed. But there was, this is, uh, SB number one forty-six is the, uh, um, uh, resolution to change the constitution, which will come to vote before the people in September, I mean, in November. And, um, then, um, the bill that was finally passed, Senate Bill number one ninety, that, which was, which was passed, uh, gave them very broad sweeping powers. And instead of listing dentistry, social work, nursing and pharmacy, um, the powers, the, um, bill authorized that there be scholarship, a scholarship commission established, which would make grants to, for education, for, um, professions and for educati- uh... And par- and paramedical education. They listed three things instead of all those, because we had trouble. When this bill went to the Senate and went to the House, everybody wanted to get on the bandwagon and get money. And we would have lost the bill, let me say this. This bill would have been lost had it not been for Mr. Ham- Mr. George Hamilton. Now, he just went right into that conference table and contended with the gentleman on the committee. And we were right there when he did it. And the, and he was a person and having the prestige that he had and the standing in the state that he had to listen to him. But any lesser person could not have, had, that we would not have had a thing without Mr. Hamilton. And I'm going to give him the full credit for what he's done.
But he rewrote it, Paul.
He rewrote it. And, um, it was not passed as in this present form, however, that's, uh, purely academic to contend about that first. But now this other, as a matter of appropriation, that possibly should, uh, there should be something done about that because the appropriation was not made yet and cannot made, be made until January of sixty-five.
Dynasty and social work and pharmacy was on the, in the bill of nineteen sixty-three that was passed. But nursing wasn't in that bill, wasn't.
That's right.
Those that we, that were only.
So, then the, the, the new bill, which was, the new bill, which was passed, just gives them broad sweeping powers instead of all paramedical education, which would include anybody. That the commission decided to give scholarships for education to those persons in, in the, um, medical field. Except the doctors, that the doctors are eliminated.
For point of information, though, Mr. Hamilton says we should give you a lot of credit. So, we do.
Well...
We nursed him.
I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Holland, but actually, I know, I know what turned the, turned the current on. It was Mr. Hamilton. And I'm giving him the credit where the credit belongs. Of course, we did what we could, but we would have been just like so many bystanders around there if we had not have had a man of his prestige and standing to come to our side. Because this thing was dead. That man, Mr. Wilks, he just had this thing, he just had this thing, um, killed. Oh, by the way, I will mention that he did get, Ms. Hammer had traded with him a little bit. But it wasn't the bad, I mean, didn't hurt our cause any. And, um, Mr. Wilks wanted a bill passed which would set up a, an incorporation to make loans for anybody or girl in the state of Georgia who wished to go on and finish their college education on a guaranteed basis, a repayment guarantee. And, uh, that's what he tried to sidetrack this bill with. And Mister Hamilton told him, says, "You go ahead and I'll help you with yours if you'll help me with mine." And Mister Wilks helped him. And he helped Mister Wilks, so they both got passed and they just money everywhere for education, so everybody ought to get on, get in the act.
Do you think we should make a, I don't know if Al is in town or not, uh, the change, if it should be read, is there any concerns?
Well, it's certain there's no appropriation bill, that's the only thing. If you want to read it, there's no point. I mean, there's no objection to reading it, but I, somebody might question it. And it's sure not an appropriation bill.
Why don't you come over here, tell me, give me a report. Yeah, I am talking, I shouldn't.
Well, I, I, this is a very good report. It's a very excellent report. And there was an appropriation bill, but that bill didn't get out, it didn't get off the ground. Because the, in the first place, we had to get these other two moving before we could get the appropriation. So, oh, I guess it, well, I, um, I tell you, just read it like it is. And then, if anybody questions it, we can, uh, explain it. But for the matter of minutes, then I would suggest that Miss Ditchfield be contacted and requested to make that change because it is not an appropriation bill.
Madam President, I'd like to say, urge everybody to register so they can go and vote for this this fall and November.
That's right. We're gonna have to get a lot of votes.
For referendum vote.
That's right. It's a referendum vote. And unless it's passed by the people of Georgia, we won't get it. But I'd rather expect we'll get it.
Thank you, Miss Hudson. May we have a report, membership credentials, Miss Martha Bailey?
Yes, um, we had a meeting the sixteenth of February and, uh, approved twelve members and deferred one. And, uh, since that time, though, she did not, she didn't get registered in the state of Georgia and her dues have been refunded to her and she's out of the state, so we won't have that problem. And now we have twenty-four applications to be approved and fourteen of those, uh, were just received Monday or Tuesday of this week. And we plan to have a meeting, uh, possibly Tuesday.
And where is the membership?
Uh, here it is and, um, it's, uh, six hundred and fifty-two with six associates. And that is forty-eight members, a decrease of forty-eight members as compared with nineteen sixty-three. Six hundred and fifty-two with six associates.
And approved was one and the third one.
Approved twelve and deferred one.
Forty-eight last in March, uh, six of three.
Yes. But if we approve these new applications, if we get that reference then, that will be twenty-four more.
That's report, ask, this time last year was only fourteen, I believe, and they have eighty-three, three hundred and eighty-three, so we're hoping to catch up with that.
We want to catch up and pass it.
Thank you, Martha. Do we have a report of nominations to, uh, to public relations, you have?
We have nothing seen in the newspapers, uh, we're saving that for nurse week, we go all out then, but some of the sections have. I think you'd be interested in, that this is from the occupational health section and they got a list of all the, um, places that have, um, nurses and want you to help them and send them out, trying to recruit membership and also some of the doctor offices they included. And then we got this from ANAU, if you haven't seen the news poster, we got two hundred of those that we'll be sending out to nurses.
This is real good. It says, "Become a, becoming member of the occupational health section of the Georgia State Nurses Association. Today, we need your, you and your support." And then it's a treasurer's dream down here. "I fell asleep the other night and while I had my snooze, I dreamed each men- member stepped right up and promptly paid her dues. But when I found it was but a dream, I nearly threw a fit. It's up to you to make it true. Suggestions, please remit." That's, that's from the occupational health.
Is it all right for me to tell them who ANAU did about the membership thing that's going to be included in the biohospes next year for the new graduates? How about you, Dixon, on the membership committee? Well, I just got word on, I happen to be on the committee and they approved in January all the recommendations by the committee and all newly licensed nurses will be given the advantage of one full year, gonna have year membership. That's one of the things that they plan to do. And the reason they can't make mandatory, uh, membership is because it's unlawful. No other profession in all the world, except the law profession, is allowed to do it. And of course, they're going to make some clarification on that, uh.
So this past year, membership for new graduates, as famous we have, right?
Well, you just have it for the rest of the year, but they're going to give them the full, all that time and one more full year to get them started off. And they were working on continuous membership and recognition, but they didn't get that through and they postponed the meeting from the thirty-first. I just had time to read it today. It's going to be, it's due on the thirty-first of March, but it'll be in October because they need a new director. And instead of the regional membership or workshops, they'll have national.
Report of special committee careers, Miss Mallory.
Did she get you in there? Well, she's going to have a meeting soon, get one for me.
Committee of Special Practice.
The count, and it's, um, ladies, gentlemen, please, this district, yes, and they firing behind the floor of meeting on the committee on professional practice, nursing practice, which met March the third, nineteen sixty-four at three PM. Room four oh two, Golden County Health Department. Press, Miss Marilyn Lott, Miss Alma Tuckins, and Mrs., uh, Andy Wade. Absent was Mrs., uh, Louise Vaughn and Miss Margaret Undergaugh. The committee sent, uh, spent the time in first reviewing last year's activities. Studying available materials in search of a better understanding of the functions of the committee. Free to carry out the functions of the committee proposed, a program be planned to appoint the membership with the history and evaluation of this committee on three levels, district, state, and national. Four, discussion of recent change of grades in the state board of examiners. After due consideration, the committee wishes to request this district yesterday register protest and express its concern to the board of examiners for nurses for Georgia about changes that violate the preferences of, uh, licensure, which is guaranteed that the holder of a license is confident to practice the profession. Madely Wade, chairman. Um, Madam Chairman, I'd like to say that this, uh, has already been brought to the attention of the GSNA board and has already taken care of.
Thank you.
I know that they report be accepted in place on time.
Is there any discussion?
And in order to answer, what action does the GSNA to refer it to the state board of examiners?
May we have a report on the, um, committee on insurance? Committee on Functions of ANA, of Graves, steady committee of registry.
The steady committee of the registry met on March the third, nineteen sixty-four, at one thirty PM in the boardroom of Saint Joseph's Firmly. The road call, Miss Liz Gallen, president, Sister Mary Christine, and Lucy Mace, chairman. Mrs. Embly Serbs, chairman of the private duty section, fifth district, GSNA. And Mrs. Ina Hooker, director of the registers, fifth district, and the executive secretary, Miss Atkins, were present by invitation. Miss Mace gave a review of the audit report of the Nurses Professional Register for nineteen sixty-three. The chairman announced that Miss Graves had requested a meeting with the steady committee for the purpose of being, of helping to work out problems of failing calls for critically ill and difficult cases. Sister Christine stated that having, the hospitals having their own registers were Georgia Baptist, Southphone, DeKalb, and Piedmont. Those supporting the central register includes Saint Joseph, Crawford Long, Emory University, and Grady Hospital. Mrs. Hooker gave a report of the hospital's status in regards to the calls. General discussion followed and a questionnaire was proposed to survey the private duty nurses on the register in regards to the restrictions and requirements. A letter from the undergraduate nurses association was considered. The following recommendations were made. That billheads be sold only to members in good standing of the Nurses Professional Register, not to be transferable by individuals to non-members. Two, that all billheads, printed forms, and other printed matters go through the printing committee and bear the fifth district seal. That, three, that educational programs be encouraged and workshops be sponsored for the hospitals to provide improving, improved nursing care of their specialties. That a ratio of fees for private duty nurses for the licensed practical nurses and the undergraduate nurses be continued unchanged. The practical, the registered practical nurse, three fourths of the RN, and the undergraduate, three fourths of the RN plus five percents. That a meeting with Miss Graves and the interested group be arranged, adjourned at three, two thirty. Now, going back to the, this, uh, question of, uh, a questionnaire to the private duty nurses was one thing that Sister Christine and I had talked about by si- working out something and bringing it to the board or either sending out a list to the members for you to, to study and then to bring back to the board before it goes to the private duty nurses, is for them to give, have a list of, of things, of just asking questions of them. Uh, first, what hospitals do they prefer to have calls to? And that would maybe be number one. And then number two, uh, what cases, uh, do they object to being called for? And several questions like that. And then getting the, uh, getting their approval or their thinking of this questionnaire with the signatures. And if the register had something like that, it would save a great deal of time. Instead of them going down the list, calling and refusing and refusing and refusing, they could have it tabulated and have it where they could see it and place the call to the person that is available for that particular case. There's where, uh, so much discussion at the present time is coming from, is nurses refusing to take hard case and refusing to take this and refusing to take that, all when they get to the hospital saying, well, they didn't know anything about it. But we do feel that if the hospitals with their specialty would give courses that the nurses could go, the ones that are interested in that work, I, I believe we could gain a great deal. That was a thinking of, uh, Sister Christine and I. And we just wanted to put it up to you people to see what you think before we start working on anything because there's no need of us wasting our time if it's not going to be approved after we spend a great deal of time. But I would want the board, before anything went out, I would want the approval of the board of the questionnaire and after we've had our thinking, then for you people to make any corrections or to add to. And then we would take it and work it over and bring it to the board for approval.
Well, one thing that might be of help would be for the registry to get more information on the patient before she calls that private duty nurse.
Well, sometimes, tha- tha- that's true too, and we could ask, add that.
The hospital, uh, the calling system, I mean, from the hospital is way messed up, in my opinion, and I nurse at all the hospitals.
That they do not give enough information when they place the call.
That's right. And then one person places it and that person places it and you never know. You go on the case and sometimes when you get that, both people, one doctor, and why that doctor's just been called in. And it's not even that doctor's case.
Well, that's a good point, but I think we would have to notice, notify the hospitals that they would be just a little more explicit with their placing of a call.
I wonder if there could be some, um, less, more paperwork again, but if. The hospitals could have some kind of, of form that they fill out or have the families fill out or something to request private duty nurses, uh, to go down to the office and then you, it's like the game of dice. So many times when something's told four or five times, it's not the same. And that's what happens sometimes. It's written down.
Well, I think a number of years ago, uh, it's rather vague to find mine at the present time. But patients, that is, the family, whoever the family that were asking for a private duty nurse or if it was a doctor, a slip had to be signed before a private duty nurse was called.
We used to do that Crawford Long.
Well, it, it was at one time, that was a rule.
I know.
And that, uh, I don't know when it fell by the wayside or anything like that, but it has been.
Well, instead of sending out questionnaires, my suggestion would be to get you a group of private duty nurses that nurses in most all hospitals, nurse mo- most all patients and all doctor cases, and let them talk to you. And they can give you a lot of information.
Well, I know that, um, when I joined the registry, they, uh, uh, asked me to present, you give, uh, two hospitals where you would like to work.
That's right.
And that's on file down there, I believe.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Well, some, uh, yes, it has been. But see, there's some that are gone and there's new ones in that has never.
And then they ask, uh, what cases would you object to accept?
That's right, that's right. But if we had something new.
Well, with all, only a hundred and eighty that is saying their dues, they shouldn't have an a hundred and eighty in their file this year.
Well, they, they, they don't have eighty, a hundred and two, I think it is. But the, the thing of, is if we had something.
Well, they say they ought to bring their card up to date.
But if we had something new, though, uh, something up to date in the, because people change their minds, their health or changes in their family life and things like that, change their.
You speak, sort of like a flip chart.
That's right. And if you had something.
The hospitals.
That's right. If you had something new, uh, to, for the registers to go by, I believe, uh, eventually, we could work out something that would be, uh, efficient. Uh, Miss Mace, while we're on the subject of calls, uh, I wonder if it wouldn't be a good time to do away with the individual list? And when people register in, now, this is, this is the thing that's caused all friction in private duty section. All the mess has been going on for about fifteen years, this is it. Well, fifty. Uh, if that individual list were distraught and when a nurse registers in, if she wants to work at Emory and work at Agston, put her on both lists. Don't register by lungies, but by hospitals, because we have so many hospitals, ma'am. Maybe the others will come back. Uh, and just do away with that list entirely.
I agree.
Uh, I do think too that this would stop so much, um, uh, so many calls, uh, into the registry. Uh, into the registry by nurses who don't understand procedure. Who just literally ball the, uh, registrars out because of some of these, this sort of thing. And other reasons, it would stop some of that. And I do think a rule should be put in this to suspend nurses who unnecessarily do that sort of thing. Because registrars have a busy time, they don't have time for that. And the slander and so forth that they get, there's no excuse for it. And if girls can't be ladies, uh, then they should be suspended. And any complaints they have, they should be reminded that they should come to the Registry Committee or the Study Committee. Until we have a Registry Committee again. I think all of these things all be cleared up.
Uh, Sister Christine, can you add to or take off what I'm just saying?
No, I think the drink.
Before we called the meeting and then it was, uh, wide discussed, Ms. Serbs, uh, knows. And we want to include, uh, Ms. Serbs and Mrs. Hooker, uh, to the meetings. Because we feel they can be a great help, uh, to the committee until we can get things organized. But I, I firmly feel that if we could send out something, and I'm not saying I'm the one to get it ready. But I will be glad to help. But just to get some things listed and then send a copy to every one of the board members. For you to strike out or add to, or, or correct or improve. And then we would get it, uh, copied again and bring it to the board meeting for, you know, to know if, if it was what we wanted. Before it was mailed, the expense was, uh, of mailing. And get something new.
I would like to move that, uh, that this sort of questionnaire be devised by the Study Group and people that they feel. And can assist them in this. And that it be, uh, approved by the board.
Well, that's...
That is just what you said.
Yes, that's right.
And that it be sent to each person who currently is a member of the private duty section. Uh, a m- member of the registry, excuse me. And, uh, that a cover letter interpreting the purpose be sent with the questionnaire.
That's right, that's right. I second the motion.
What was the motion?
I didn't hear that.
Well, she's making, I'd like to hear.
I didn't understand it as a motion, I was thinking, cause I didn't...
No, she, no, I was just merely explaining, she's making the motion. I was just explaining.
Well, I didn't... I'd be happy to rescind that.
She's right, she's just the same thing that I have just said. But it'll come to you people, for you to study before the next meeting. So it can be, and then be sent back so that it can be put into form to bring to the meeting for voting.
Well, at our private duty meeting where we have the private duty nurses there. Uh, the discussion is that we should have our, uh, Registry Committee back. And let us work on our things and come bring them to the vote.
Well, we're planning on giving it back to you. But we, we do want to feel that we've accomplished something. And I feel that we must do, uh, do something to get something concrete. But we want the help of the board. And you people can ask it, get anything clear that you want to by asking. But I think if you stop and, and think yourself, you'll be able to add to, to help. Too many people can't fix up a, any one form. It takes just a few people. And we feel if we can get a, an outline and then for you people to correct it, add to or take off. And then we would get it ready for the approval of the board before it was mailed.
This Registry Committee though is set up not for the private duty section, but by the, um, by the carrying on the work of the executive board through the registry.
Well, we usually had a report and, and at our private duty meetings, we passed on a lot of things. Got reports from it and worked with it too.
Department of Private is writing this motion, is it your wish that we act on these recommendations here, Ms. Mace?
You, you have to, uh...
She has a special form written on it, don't keep it.
I think it's, uh, the first one, man, is that the bill is be sold only members in good standing of the Nurses Professional Register. Not to be transferred by individuals to non-members under the adoption.
Can we have a discussion on that or don't ask them?
It's the phone toll now.
All right. I'm on duty with a patient that I took out to Piedmont that I nursed in the family. This is the eighth time. And we're at Piedmont now and the afternoon nurse does not have any new bill heads. And they have insurance and they want new bill heads when I give mine. So I've been using mine for her.
Well, you can't do it.
They can't do it.
That's why all Piedmont nurses come support the registry.
They don't support the registry and, and we're just...
Well, I'm happy, cause I'm in Piedmont.
Well, you, you, you just...
I can't tell them if I'm that nurse, because you can't tell them.
But let her get her own, uh, bill head.
Well, and all the woman is paying me and she asked me.
Well, tell her you can't let her. Well, just tell them that, uh, just tell them that you can't do it.
What you gonna do to me if I do it?
But if you, if, if that...
Put you on a...
No, it doesn't either. It just puts you above the others.
When I did private duty down there, we couldn't transfer.
Do you mean you just paid you because you're in Piedmont Hospital?
No, it puts you above the others because you are in good standing. You are in good standing.
But you give her your bill, does the other nurse give her a bill to her too?
Yeah, but she wants the same kind of bill head for her insurance per jency.
Well, she don't have the same kind of bill heads from standard doctors, does she? This is eight times I've nursed in this family and I'm just saying, now I'll give her a bill head as long as I'm gonna do it with a special.
That's tragic, cause you're defeating her purpose. That's just how you're defeating your purpose.
Well, there you go.
Cause this is supporting the practice.
But I can't make that nurse go down and get her bill head. I can't make her pay no more than you can make nurses in your section pay.
You can't make her, but you don't have to give her yours.
Yeah.
No, you're wrong. You're absolutely wrong.
Well, I think that's defeating the purpose.
It is defeating it. You, you just put yourself on a higher level. Excuse me.
That's all right. Legally, a bill written out by this nurse in her own handwriting, giving her license. Giving her a registration number is a legal document and cannot be turned down by anybody. She does not have to have any bill heads.
But your insurance company...
If she puts her registration down there, that insurance company don't have to pay it.
They'll have to take it.
And, and they'll have to take it, cause I happen to know about that.
They've always taken them before these were printed.
Yeah, well, what do the rest of the Piedmont nurses do when insurance comes up?
Yeah. I don't know what to do, I never, I don't...
No, uh, if it's, uh, if it's a Fifth District bill head, then only a member of the Fifth District should use it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, now, I think the patient, you could explain to the patient. If this is written out even in her handwriting with her registration number, it is a legal standard.
All I did was the woman says that girl didn't have her new bill heads. She asked me if she could borrow for the other girl. And I said, we're not supposed to do it unless she's a member of the registry. But when this man was suffering the tortures of the damned, we could not get nurses for him. They were kind enough to come and help us out to nurse that man. And still, my, my position on that is, uh, what am I supposed to do? That's what I say, unless you come back on...
Well, you, you, this was your patient and you had to act in your best judgment for that patient.
And my best judgment right there was to let...
Question that, but I think that she could...
I give them to the woman, I didn't give them to the nurse.
A- a- and I do know there are times in, in, uh, with a critical patient that even, uh, a little...
My question is, what are, what are we gonna do to the nurses that do let out?
Very unfavorable way.
Do let out this because bill heads without them paying. Because in hospitals that are not, that are not, uh, members, there will things like this come up. Cause it's already come up with me. And at other hospitals, it might do it, that are not participating. Cause I go to DeKalb and I go to South Fulton and I go to all of them.
That's just supporting Ms. Garen though in, uh, her wrongdoings. And it is wrong for Ms. Garen to have nurses that do not belong to the district. Uh, not state members and things like that.
Why can't they have their own bill heads if they don't belong to that?
They can, they can have them printed.
That's what I was suggesting to the hospital.
With their registration number.
Have your own bill head.
Go down to the printer and print them up some bills with their name at the top and charges.
Crawling.
Registration number, that's all they have to do.
I don't think that's bad.
Back in the old days...
The question came up, what's she gonna do? This is, was just on station there.
Well, back in the old days, this is ninety years ago, when I did private duty, the individual hospitals. Used to, uh, have them, uh, I mean, and you could get them from the hospital where you, uh, package your bill head. And, uh, I mean, that wasn't your specialty, but, uh...
Well, you just write out a bill and give it to them. And for professional services rendered and sign their name and registration number. And the court would make the insurance company pay it.
Well, that's all we did when I did private duty, a hundred years ago.
Are you ready for them?
Nobody wanna bill head on.
Doesn't say, but then of, uh, the first recommendation, that bill heads be sold only to members in good standing of the Nurses Professional Register. Not to be transferred by individuals to non-members. Please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no, motion is carried, thank you.
Madam Chairman, it's anything you and all amount, it's not all.
Well, we were acting on the recommendations of the committee to the board.
It's relative to the bill head, I just had a call that I'd like to make out, but I... I was wondering, uh, whether I'm not still not, I can understand, I think a little of the individual implication still. I don't see how this stops people from passing them out, one person to another. Or them falling perhaps into, into the hands where they really do not belong. May protect the association, I don't really see that this protects the patient, uh, in, in this way. I'm wondering what would happen if in the future, and this doesn't have to be now, and you supply just been brought in, we can tell tonight. What would happen if these were numbered like your church donation, uh, uh...
Well, they gonna have only one book out of the pile.
That doesn't, that's not the point. The point is that if you, if you, if, uh, you sign out, Ruth Bryce, Book Number Twelve. And a Number Twelve bill head suddenly appeared someplace it did not belong. Then here we would have some check on this.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to bring up the question, uh, how you gonna check on all these nurses?
You're not gonna check unless a problem comes up, but if a problem's up, then you could have, I think, a certain...
Based on that check that's based on that bill is.
Well, for us, it's concerned, we have the addressograph down, then could, could be done, even their names and the imprint put on it. Well, for us, it's concerned, it'd be a little more work.
Well, if they are following the wrong...
You personalize bill, pay it, doing it.
But you could take the number, you know, and just run through, just like your...
It's merely a suggestion, I'm not moving this, I'm bringing up a good question, just don't...
Uh, we'll read the second.
The second recommendation, that all bill heads, printed forms and other printed matters. Go through the Printing Committee and bear the Fifth District seal.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
I had my first hit and the lady didn't make it.
Oh, I saw. I thought you said, I just said me.
Any discussion on the second recommendation? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. And the second recommendation is carried.
There is that the educational program be, uh, encouraged and workshops be sponsored by hospitals to provide improved nursing care. In their specialties. How may the hospitals be contacted and to determine whether they are willing to carry on these workshops? And to, um, see if nursing care can be improved.
Second.
Looking to mend now, couldn't it? Would like to include high school and school of nursing.
Would you like to let the register be a student?
Would this be acceptable?
Yes. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no, motion is carried. The fourth one is that the ratio of fees for private duty nursing for the licensed practical nurses. And the undergraduate nurses be continued unchanged. That is the LPN, three-fourths of the registered nurse. Uh, Licensed Undergraduate, three-fourths of the registered nurse plus sixty-six. This is hot with girls.
How did we have a guess?
It's three-fourths of the registered nurses pay the practical nurses.
I know I read it somewhere.
It's in law rules and regulations, they said it themselves. And it's, it's in the, we've had letters, uh, to that effect, but in nineteen sixty-one, you did it. I got it here someplace, but, um, anyhow, it was done in the private duty.
Because ANA recommended it, we cannot act and set it.
No, 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 it comes from national headquarters on down.
It's NAPNA, NAPNA that's recommending that, the Federation. National Federation of Practical Nurses, I don't think ANA has ever recommended that. They have no right to say anything about what, uh, somebody else does about the salary, ANA doesn't. But National Federation has recommended that and so has the National Association of Practical Nurse Education and Services.
Well, you got it in your rules, you approved it from the rules before these were created too. It's on page eleven here, that the minimum fee for licensed practical nurses should be three-fourths of the currently approved hours for the registered professional nurse. And these were created in sixty-one.
That's the practical nurse.
This, this is our rule, it's off our Fifth District Register.
I don't think ANY would have yet.
Well, Sister just raised the private duty nurse's salary. Uh, if the licensed practical nurses should be forced to private duty, private duty nurse's salary, wasn't that automatically given one?
No, they still will have to vote it in their own meeting.
It'll pass.
It'll pass, so don't worry.
It'll pass.
I mean, we can't do it. Yeah, they already listed on all three cards.
They got to the undergraduate, most of the...
I would...
The ones that called in, I guess I'd had over a dozen called.
I know, and the reason we've always turned them down on that is because they have never finished...
That's the licensed practical nurse, that's the one that came in today, tells you.
And eventually, we hope, we are the only state that even issues license to undergraduates. And we are hoping that someday that'll be abolished for good. Because at least the practical nurses have finished their prescribed course of study. And the undergraduates have never completed a course of any kind.
So that, yeah, from, um, Eunice Nolan from Princeton. And I said, pretty simple part, so I don't believe, but it didn't wait as fast. In accordance with the rules and policies of the Georgia State Nurses Association. And the bowels of the Georgia, uh, Association of Practical, Licensed Practical Nurses Incorporated. Please consider this an official complaint by the Georgia Association Licensed Practical Nurse Fifth District Member pertaining to wages. It is our understanding that nurses of the Georgia State Nurses Association have received a two dollar increase... have received a two dollar increase in wages effective March the first nineteen sixty-four. As of this date, the Georgia Association of Licensed Practical Nurses have not received any increase in wages. We call your attention to section three, page eleven of the Rules and Policies of the Nurses Professional Registry, fifth district, which reads as follows. Quotation, the minimum fee for licensed practical nurses shall be three-fourths of the current approved salary for the registered professional nurses. The GALPN bylaws also require that all members of the GALPN receive seventy, uh, seventy-five percent of the Georgia State Nurses' wages. Members of the GALPN at a special call meeting voted unanimously to abide by the GALPN bylaws that future services rendered by the GALPN's wages shall be in accordance with the policies outlined above. Your prompt consideration of cooperation and compliance would be greatly appreciated. Eunice Nolan, our president and Margaret Lovell is registry committee chairman.
That's fifth district, fifth district.
Who's the registry committee chairman, what, what's the...
Practical nurse.
Practical nurse.
Well, did we get a motion on this? I don't believe anybody made a motion to accept.
Under Princeton bylaws, do we have an alternative?
No.
No.
Then I'm in the acceptance of the recommendation.
I second.
And that they be so notified.
Don't you think that love from love rate won't be read since it's broad? I was thinking...
Well, no, they won't have between the practical and the others. They want one half of the ratio between this practical and the, and the...
Well, how much do they get?
It came to the attention of our organization of pending pay raise for nurses in the fifth district. In view of the fact that the members of our organization have received adequate, adequate professional nurses training to become licensed undergraduate nurses, we feel that we should be included in the consideration pay increase.
They got it.
The figure that our, the figure that our organization members and supporters is that one half of the difference between the licensed practical nurse and the registered nurses dealing rate. We will greatly appreciate your consideration and support, uh, in this matter. If there is any further information you may desire or require in support of our request, please contact me at your earliest convenience. Sincerely, Elizabeth Cheney, um, recording secretary of the Licensed Undergraduate Nurses Association, George.
Well, didn't we just vote to raise them fifty cents above practical?
We have voted yet, we have a motion.
Which is discussion. They, they already have that, that it be unchanged, they get the, uh, three-fourths...
But this motion says, that's what we're seeing in this motion.
Mm-hmm, three-fourths, five-sixths, three-fourths, but they won't...
Is the six what they want?
They won't split.
Well, Mother Teresa...
That's the contrary, not do it.
I can't see, I can't see, um, why they are entitled, uh, to anymore, uh, in their raise of fee. I think they have adequate, um, fees because they really don't accept any responsibility. They don't give medicines and a lot of them are just glorified babysitters.
I see where they deserve it.
And I, I can't see that, um, adding, no.
Giving them. Well, I feel this way about them, the majority of them are dismissed out of schools.
They completed a course.
That's right, uh, that's the reason why they didn't... So, I think they're making plenty for the contribution they've given to nursing.
May I just say that the board is, uh, board of examiners at the present time and has for several, uh, months, and they are paying particular attention to the licensing of these undergraduate nurses and they are not licensed if they were turned out of a school, I can tell you that.
Well, then that's new.
Well, it's, that's ruled, it's been set up.
Because it has, it has been...
If they were expelled from a school, they are not licensed. Now, if they had to drop out for disaster or illness or lack of finances or some justifiable cause and that's verified with the director of the school.
Well, it may be, it may be now, but Ms. Hudson, in, back in the past, it...
Well, that's, uh, the board can't set up those regulations and they have set them up and they are following through on it very carefully and, and none of these people, in fact, of the business, is very few of them are licensed, very few of them. And that's actually should be, I think, yes.
Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no.
And Ms. Atkins will send a letter to them, uh, notifying that the board has...
Well, I certainly don't think they're working, but if it's in the bylaws, that's what... Is there any way that they can eliminate these?